Page, please make sure it's on silence and does not go off. We want to also thank Lynn Sutton for being our Sergeant at Arms tonight. And Lynn is always faithful to be here, and certainly thank him for being here again tonight. As we open the meeting, Commissioner Steve Smith will lead our invocation, and then at the proper time after that, the colors will be presented. We'll be led in the Pledge of the Flag by Keaton Watzinski. He's a member of Troop 130 at Berry's Chapel Church of Christ. So we certainly are happy to have Keaton with us tonight. So at this time, if you would, please stand for the invocation and then for the pledge.
Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, we give you thanks for this beautiful day and for all the many blessings that you have given us this day and all our days. We ask that your wisdom guide us before down on this governing body as we make decisions on behalf of the citizens of Williamson County. We thank you for your power, being with all those who are in need of your healing. We ask this in the name of our son and amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Ms. Anderson, if you would, all of us, if you're present, press your, excuse me, your white button, your present button. Everybody that's here, press your buttons. Ms. Anderson, if you would, port the roll call, please.
I'm only present for the four actors. Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Ford, Commissioner Ricky Jones, and Commissioner Lou Green.
Okay. Just so that all of you are aware, Commissioner Green had surgery over the weekend and is at home, progressing well. But he's had several things happen to him over last weekend, but he is at home and is recovering. Ricky Jones is away in softball tournament with his team in the finals, so he's, I think, out of, almost out of the state tonight. Greg Davis is out of town on business. He let me know that he would be away, and then Commissioner Ford called me about 10:30 this morning, indicating that he would be out of town tonight on company business as well. So that's the information that we've got relative to the four that are missing. Resolution deadline for the June County Commission meeting will be Friday, May 25th, at 4:30 PM. So make a note of that, Friday, May 25th, at 4:30 PM, is the resolution deadline for the June meeting. Approval of amendments of the regular March 12th, 2007 County Commission meeting. All these copies were mailed to each member of the commission. I'll entertain a motion that these be approved.
No, approved.
Motion is made. Commissioner Chalfont, second. Who seconded it?
Brockman.
Brockman, thank you. I'm going to get together here. Any discussion on the motion to approve the minutes? I see none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Thank you very much. Introduction and acceptance of the Highway Commission meeting minutes. You've got two sets that have been mailed out to you. I'll entertain a motion to accept both of those sets, the March and the April meeting. Commissioner Cook, the motion. Commissioner Wilson, the second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous adoption of acceptance of the Highway Commission minutes. Under Citizens Communication, tonight, we have two people that have signed up. I'll ask you to come to the podium, if you would, to give us your name and address and information on who you're representing, so that we can have that for the record. The first one that signed up is Mr. Greg Coker with Atmos Energy. Greg?
Commission, thank you. Guest, I have with me Kenny Hay, and Kenny Hay is our local manager here in Franklin, Tennessee. My name is Greg Coker. I'm the Director of Public Affairs for Atmos Energy. I report to our President and CEO, and on behalf of Atmos Energy, I'd like to simply thank you all for what you do, your leadership. Atmos Energy is our proud partner in the economic development of the fastest counties in Tennessee, one of the fastest counties in the United States. We're proud to serve that area or this area, and I appreciate your leadership. Tonight, very briefly, I would like to introduce you to Kenny Hay. His office is just down the street. We have an exciting project that we think will spur the economic development of this community, some $8 million investment that Atmos Energy is making in the Goose Creek area. And with that, I'll turn it over to Kenny Hay. Again, thanks for your leadership, and thank you for the opportunity to let us serve the consumers in this area.
Thank you.
Mr. Nyron, I have a copy here. If you pass that to the Commissioner. Mainly what we wanted to come to the commission on tonight was to let you know what Atmos Energy is doing in Williamson County. With the growth that this county keeps, that just keeps on coming, you know, and especially down south and Thompson Station, Spring Hill. This past winter, in a subdivision called Beacon Hills down on Thompson Station Road, you know, we did experience one of the coldest winters we've had in several years, but our system actually got down to four pounds of pressure. And that was, it makes for a long sleepless night when that happens. And so in order to take care of that, we went Atmos Energy, we went to our Board of Directors in Dallas, Texas. In our normal year, Atmos Energy will invest $2.7 million in capital improvements in Williamson County. The project that we're fixing to start is estimated right at $8 million. So in this, and all we want to do is just make the commissioners aware of what's going on in southern Williamson County. That way, if you're, the people that you represent starts calling, you know what's going on. This project will start on Lewisburg Highway. It will be a 10-inch main extension, high-pressure gas, going down Lewisburg Highway, starting at Oakwood, continuing down, turning right on Goose Creek Bypass, going all the way down Goose Creek Bypass, going across 840, coming back up, crossing what we call the new Walmart property now, going down Kreitz Lane, going down Kreitz Lane. Then we will turn on Pantah Road and connect back into the system out of Columbia, Tennessee, on Thompson Station Road. And like I said, what this will do for our customers, this will take care of pressure problems probably for the next 20, 30 years, when all of us are home enjoying our retirement. So the, like I said, we just want to let you know what's taking place, you know, in the county. In order to run this line, we will be going to landowners asking for easements, and we will be paying fair market value for the property that we will be going across. And the, so, you know, we're doing everything, you know, as nicely as we can, you know, cleanup will be superior. But anytime anybody in this commission has any problems on what Atmos Energy is doing, my telephone number is on here. I keep the telephone with me 24/7, so it never turns off when you're in the natural gas business. So feel free to call, and we're very proud to make this investment in Williamson County. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenny. Gail Moyer-Harris?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. I am here as a representative of the 21st Drug Court, and at your place, you'll notice a green postcard that is an invitation to each of you commissioners to join us for the seventh Drug Court graduation. It is going to be held Tuesday, May 22nd, in Courtroom A of the Williamson County Judicial Center. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to personally invite each one of you to join us as we celebrate the journey that six of our participants have made over the last two years, and some much more than those two years. It's going to be a great night and a great way to learn about Drug Courts, so we hope that you can join us at 6 o'clock next Tuesday, May 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes our Citizens Communication. Just for a matter of report to the commission, the Mayor Anderson is in Brentwood as we speak, swearing in the new commissioners that are taking their seats tonight, and he'll be late. So if he gets here, we'll have his report when he gets here. If he's much too late, we'll do it without him. Mr. Coleman is here. I see David is feeling better. He's been not feeling too good today, but certainly good to see him here. So that you'll know, that's where the mayor is, and he'll be en route shortly. Under Communications and Messages, we have a proclamation of appreciation to Earl DeMarcus Lampley, Jr., and Mr. Tom Murdock is here to present this proclamation. Mr. Murdock?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. For the commissioners, every down there, you have an opportunity to work with an individual who brings a lot of wisdom to the table and is willing to share that, and that's Mr. Lampley. And we have a proclamation, and I'll read it. Whereas in April 1975, Mr. Earl DeMarcus Lampley, Jr., was appointed to the Williamson County Election Commission by the late Cletus McWilliams, a city attorney, Franklin attorney, and former 61st District State Representative and Speaker Pro Tem in the Tennessee House of Representatives. And whereas, at that time, Mr. Lampley served on the Election Commission with fellow members Bill Arns, Chairman, Yvonne Herbert, Secretary, Roy D. Hughes, Member, William Osmond, Member, and Ms. Ruth Admison was appointed, registered at large shortly thereafter. And whereas, since his appointment to the Election Commission, Mr. Lampley has witnessed the increase in the registered voters in Williamson County from 24,640 to approximately 106,770 today. A change in the 16-county Commission district compared to 12 today and 19 voting precincts in comparison to 35 today. And whereas, during the past 32 years, Mr. Lampley has served as a dedicated public servant and as a member of the Williamson County Election Commission. Therefore, be it resolved that, this is by Roger, I, Rogers Anderson.
Oh.
Rogers is a little shorter tonight.
Glad you told us, Mr. Murdock.
As County Mayor of Williamson County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim Monday, May 14th, 2007, as Mr. Earl DeMarcus Lampley Day in Williamson County, and encourage all citizens to join me in recognizing and applauding Mr. Lampley for his maturous service to the citizens of Williamson County.
Mr. Lampley?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, could I have just a minute?
Yes, sir. We'll give you as many minutes as you need.
I want to just touch base a little on the election. I think that we've got the best election, not the commissioners, but the election officials here. We've got the best in the state, bar none. And it's not due to me or the other commissioners, it's due to Ann and the staff that she's got there. They know what they're doing, they work at it professional, and they do an excellent job. And I can say that I'm proud to have been a part of that for the past 30-something years. Some of you older people may not remember, but he was giving them, some of you older people may remember when we used to have the election office up on the second floor at the courthouse. We had a, about an eight-by-10 building, had a desk, a small table, one filing cabinet, and a few ledger books. That was it. We had a lady that worked three and a half days a week. So not just the number that has come along with that, to many, but we've made a lot of progress in having what we need to take care of the number of voters that we have. And I think we've actually just scratched the surface. I want to plead with you, we've asked you a few times before to give us more room. I figure before the next presidential election, Ann will have to add two or three more people, and we don't have room for them. So I want you all to keep that in mind and help us go along. But to not say anything else, I want to, come up here, Ann, you're the cause of this. All of you know Ann and what a soft voice she has. She just speaks like she's talking to her grandchildren. And I've worked with her for past, what, 10 years probably. She's just sweet as they come. But there's another side to her. I've been, it's been three weeks since I was off of the election. A week ago yesterday, no, a week ago this morning, she called me and said, "We're going to do all of this blah, blah, blah stuff." And I said, "Ann, I don't deserve that, I don't want it. I always wanted to be on the giving end, not to receive it." She lost that sweet voice that she had. She said, "We're going to do it, you're going to be there at 7 o'clock, period." So I'm here. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Ann, Mr. DeMarcus, if you would, and as Chairman, it's my authority to do this, nobody's allowed in the pit according to our rules, but I have the authority to invite you in. If you would have your family come up with you, and I'd like for you and Ann and anybody else you want to stand in here, so that our photographer and the TV cameras as well can pick that up. So if you would, I'd invite you to come on up and stand in front of us, and have your family come up.
Yep, but they will.
Ann, come on up here and, Carol, now you can come on up and get a good shot. Let me sit down and get out of the way. We certainly appreciate all the hard work and efforts of Mr. DeMarcus, and we're going to miss him. He's really been a servant of this county going way back a long time, so certainly thank him for being here tonight. Our second proclamation declaring May as Drug Court Month in Williamson County. Everybody should have a copy of this resolution that Commissioner Chalfont's presenting on your desk, so.
Don't know if the volume is such, I do hear somewhat of a hum, or is that just me?
There is a hum. Just talk above the hum.
All right. I take a great deal of pleasure in standing in for the mayor again, or tonight. Had an opportunity, and my wife and I both had an opportunity to be the first class in the 21st Judicial District Drug Task Force Citizens Academy. So this is special. I'd like to call Judge Easter and Mr. Bob Agent forward, please. Whereas drug courts combine judicial accountability and evidence-based treatment to effectively intervene against substance abuse and related crime, and whereas, results of more than 100 program evaluations and at least four experimental studies have yielded definitive evidence that drug courts are demonstratively effective and significantly improve substance abuse treatment outcomes, substantially reduce crime, and produce greater cost benefits than any other justice strategies. And whereas, the judges, prosecutors, defense attorneys, substance abuse treatment and rehabilitation professionals, law enforcement and community supervision personnel, researchers and educators, national and community leaders, and others dedicated to the movement have had a profound impact within this community, within their communities. And whereas, the drug court movement has grown from the 12 original drug courts in 1994 to 1,927 operational drug courts as of December 2006. And whereas, the week of May 27 to 31, 2007, marks National Drug Court Commencement Week, which celebrates the promise of recovery, restoring hope to drug court graduates and their families. Now therefore be it resolved that Rogers Anderson, as Mayor of Williamson County, hereby declares that a Drug Court Month be established and proclaimed May 2007 as Drug Court Month in Williamson County, and encourage all citizens to recognize the practitioners and participants who make drug courts work and the significant contributions that drug courts have made and continue to make in reducing drug usage and crime. In witness thereof, he has given his hand and caused the seal of the County of Williamson to be affixed in Franklin this 14th day of May 2007. Judge?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Appreciate that, Commissioner Chalfont. And I just want to say, on behalf of the Drug Court team, Drug Court staff, and most importantly, the Drug Court participants, we continue to be grateful and thankful to this body for your support of the Drug Court, and I'm glad to report tonight that we are still in business, and we are still making a difference, and I believe we're still saving lives. And I hope you all can come to our graduation on the 22nd. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge. Again, that is in the New Judicial Center on Fourth Avenue South, 6 o'clock, May 22nd, so please put that on your calendar.
She wants a picture.
Mr. Agent, you want to say anything? I know you've been very involved in this program. We certainly know that you've lent your support to it and a major contributor to it. I'll allow you to address the commission if you'd like.
Thank you. I appreciate your support in this. It's a very worthy cause. I'll just tell you how I got involved. Three years ago, Judge Easter addressed the Chamber of Commerce, Williamson County, Franklin Chamber of Commerce, and I sat there, and I was so impressed with the good he was doing. I approached him after the meeting and said, "I would like to help." About that time, Gail Moyer-Harris walked up and said, "We'd like to have your help, Bob." So I went on the board, and I've just been promoted to Chairman of the Board, and please, if you can, come to this graduation on the 22nd. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This announcement is on behalf of Ken Marshall, who is our Veteran Services Officer. On May 28th, at 11 o'clock, May 28th, at 11 o'clock, will be the annual Memorial Day Ceremonial Service at Veterans Park. May 28th, 11 a.m., the annual Memorial Day Ceremonial Service. And then just as an announcement, all of you need to remember our good friend, a special friend to some of us, Mr. Floyd Anderson. Floyd is recovering in NC now, and has had, what, Ms. Elaine, one knee or two knees? One knee replaced. So remember, Mr. Floyd, get him back up and going, so he can start shelling peas and picking corn, get him busy, so. Okay. Moving along to the report from county offices, because Mayor Anderson hopefully is en route. Mr. Coleman, you want to go ahead and make that report, please, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've got, the fact that we did not meet last month, we've got a double of all of our reports tonight, so I'll just quickly go over those for you. The first item we have is our Cool Springs Conference Center, and as you recall, the last time you met, we had to pay them a check in January, I believe it was about $15,000. But for the month of February, they gave us a check of $50,621. And month of March, we received a check of $17,912. So they informed us at that time that they hoped that that would be the only negative month for the rest of this year, and it looks like that's going to be the case. The next item is our Privilege Tax Collections, and we've been giving a lot of attention to this the last few months. We have the report for March and April, and both of those months continue in that decline that we've talked about. That makes approximately, I think it's five months in a row that we've been on the decline, and if we continue at this pace, we'll be off about 18 to 20 percent for the year. So that does give us some concern when we get into budget for next year and what we normally allocate to our debt service funds from the privilege tax. So want to continue to follow that very closely. And then finally, we have the two-month reports to the County Commission of all funds, the March report and the February report. Everything appears to be in line there. If you look at the March report, we have two funds, the Sheriff's Drug Control Fund and the General Debt Service Fund, have both exceeded their revenue projection, so that's a positive note, and we expect to see that also in the Rural Debt Service Fund has exceeded theirs. So it seems like we're on track to have a good year. But if you have any questions about any of those reports, we'd be glad to try to answer those.
Any questions from any commissioner of Mr. Coleman relative to these reports or information that's here? I see none. David, you want to go home?
I'll stick around as long as my knees let me, so.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Probably this funding resolution, and then you can, because David's been ill all day long, and certainly thank you for being here tonight. Schools Director, Dr. Rebecca Sharber?
Well, believe it or not, we only have eight days left of school for our students in this school year. It has gone quickly. I know it certainly has for us. I don't know about you guys. I wanted to let you know that the two new schools that we're building, Longview and Nolansville, are proceeding very well. And in fact, the people building Nolansville took on the great challenge, and they have gone past the people building Longview, and it started a month later. So now we've got a good competition going, but we do believe that they will both be finished in plenty of time to open this August, and we're real pleased with the way that's progressing. We will be having our own graduations of our seniors next week, beginning on Thursday evening with Fairview High School. And then on Friday evening, we have Middle College High and Page High. Then Saturday, we have Centennial, Ravenwood, and Independence. And Sunday, we have Franklin and Brentwood High. So as we grow and gain more high schools, we stretch out the graduation time a little bit. But we'd love to have you attend any or all of those ceremonies. But we'd love to have you attend any or all of those ceremonies. And we did put all those times and places in our FYI that we put out on a weekly basis. Or if you really would like to come and can't find that and would like to know the time and the place, just call us and we'll let you know. We are looking forward to our meeting with the Budget Committee on Thursday night about next year's budget. And we would ask that if any of the Budget Committee members or any members of the commission who are also planning to attend that meeting, if you do have questions about the budget or information you think you're going to ask us to supply that evening, it would be helpful if we knew that ahead of time, and then we could have it available and have a really productive conversation. So we would ask you to do that. And that's my report for this evening, unless you might have any questions for me.
Any questions of Dr. Sharber? See none. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hospital report, Dennis Miller.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Just a few things. The C.O.N. appeal is over. The judge will make his ruling in between four and six months. We've been advised by counsel until he makes his ruling not to discuss it, but it should be within early fall. Construction, what we're having done now should be completed by July 1st, '07. And we do have plenty of beds right now. We will probably start two more projects this year. One's a parking garage, because if we get any criticism, it's all parking, and we should because we don't have any. The second thing would be an expansion of our ORs. We're heavily a surgery hospital, and with the new doctors coming, we're going to have to have some more ORs. With this, this is kind of a time of sorrow and a time of cheer. Debbie Murdock, after 31 years of nursing at Williamson Medical Center, retired last week. And my understanding, I got it on pretty good information that, I think you all know, Tom Murdock's a master gardener. I understand she's out setting things, plants out right now. So I'm quite sure under his supervision. Also this year, we're celebrating the hospital's 50th anniversary. We have more doctors locating. I believe you saw in the paper that TOA, Tennessee Ortho-Pacemakers Alliance, is opening their office next week. And we've still got several more physicians in line. And one thing I'll tell you, you all have had to put up with me for five years. Last week, at Debbie's retirement, I'm getting a five-year pin. And when you're having fun, time goes by quickly. And with that, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them for you.
Anybody have any questions of Mr. Miller? I'd refer all of you to your April report. If you could zoom in on this, the TV to see this, Mr. Miller in his nice blonde wig and his red, that is you, Mr. Miller.
Yes, it is. That is a custom-made red dress. A lady down, a Carol down in the school therapy made.
Custom-made. Well, good. We appreciate, seriously, have a little fun with you, but you do a wonderful job in that activity and the leadership of the hospital, and Dennis, we appreciate it.
We raised about $1,500 on that dress.
Thank you.
But I also had to do it years ago, and I was brunette. I said I look a whole lot better as a brunette in the blonde. Thank you all.
Thank you. Any other committee wishing to report at this point in time? All the other committees, you've got several reports that have been mailed to you from the various departments. Any other committee wishing to report? Commissioner Barnwell, please.
Yes, the Human Resources Committee meeting scheduled for next Monday, the 21st, has been canceled due to lack of business. There's a notice on your table.
Okay. H.R. committee scheduled for next week has been canceled. Commissioner Hayes, please.
Yes, thank you. I've been asked to read a response from the Keep Williamson Beautiful Board, please. The second grade teachers and volunteers' enthusiastic response is appreciated by Keep Williamson Beautiful. We had 100% participation in the Williamson County Schools and Franklin Special School District for our second grade environmental reading program. Keep Williamson Beautiful's volunteers read an entire, read an environmental book to 127 classes. Nearly 2,800 eager-to-learn second graders were educated to be more environmentally aware. And they say, "Thank you for the opportunity to promote environmental education and lifelong community pride. Helping every child become a good environmental citizen is our goal. I'd like to express our appreciation to our school district, our school board, and everyone for allowing it." And it's quite something, if you haven't read to some of the classes, to go in and read it, it's wonderful. Also, from our Solid Waste Department, I'd like to report the great success we had with our household hazardous waste. There were 1,658 participants who came and brought household hazardous waste between the hours of 8:00 and 2:00 o'clock. So that was a line steady, and we really appreciate all the volunteers there. Thank you very much for your response.
Thank you, Commissioner Hayes. Commissioner Mills, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Although I'm not the chair of the Public Health Committee, but I am on that committee. And I know everybody has read what the director of the Williamson County Health Department sent out. But if you don't mind, I would like to ask her to come up and tell you about the health fairs that we're having in two of the schools.
Very well.
Ms. Bromley.
Ms. Bromley, would you come forward, please?
Thank you, Chairman Aaron. Thank you, Ms. Mills and the commissioners. As part of the, Ms. Mills is chairman of the Williamson County Health Council, and the Health Council, along with the Williamson County School Health Partnership, is actually doing two health fairs at Franklin and Fairview on the same day. Williamson Medical Center is participating and helping with those health fairs, along with the Health Department and the Health Council. So they'll be offering opportunities for the students to have their body mass index checked, will have a dietitian who will be there to counsel them if they have any concerns and talk to them about good nutrition. Some of the council members may have participated when we had, when Franklin Special School District had a guest come and talk to the Health Council about exercise, and he was actually at Franklin Special School District also, and encouraged those children, I guess young adults, to get up and exercise and move more. So we've got some games that they're going to play with them, and frisbees, nice little soft frisbees to throw, and show them how easy it is to exercise and get moving and get healthy. So we're really excited about the opportunity to do that, and we thank the schools for letting us do that. We're going to be doing it on their Spring Fling, Mayfest Day, so it won't, of course, interfere with academics, but we're excited about doing that.
Thank you.
And actually, they did have, at the last minute, at Page High School, they were able to participate and do a small version of that last Friday. So they got some real good ideas. A lot of the students came in, they actually gave out pedometers, and we found out that that was the most exciting thing. They really liked the pedometers, so that's lesson learned. We're going to take pedometers to Franklin and Fairview. But thank you for the opportunity.
Follow-up, Commissioner Mills?
No, just to say that I have my pedometer on. I'm wearing it.
I forgot mine this morning. I used to have.
Very good. Thank you very much, Becky. Any other report from any other commissioner, any other committee that would like to report anything at this time? Each of you have a magnet, refrigerator magnet, advertising the Williamson County Fair, the third edition, August 3rd through the 11th, 2007, at the Egg Expo Park. So stick that on your refrigerator and remember those activities as we make our plans for the fair. There's no further report to be made. We'll move on to elections and appointments, county commission appointments of the hospital Board of Trustees. These are terms that expire in 5:10, and these are nominations that are coming to us from the hospital Board of Trustees. At large districts 5, 6, 7, and 8, Isaac Ike Brown is the term expiring. Isaac Ike Brown is a nomination. I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Smith, the motion. Commissioner Chalfont, the second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Show it unanimous. Districts 1 and 2, Jim Cross, term expiring. Nomination, Jim Cross. Motion by Commissioner Cook, second by Commissioner Hancock. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Show it unanimous. Districts 11 and 12, Commissioner Mary Mills, term expiring. Nomination, Commissioner Mary Mills. Commissioner Lynch, the motion. Commissioner Hayes, the second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Show it unanimous adoption of the nomination of these hospital Board of Trustees. Notaries, you've received these in the packet that have been sent out. Each of those have been reported to you as, according to rules, I'll entertain a motion that these be adopted and accepted. Commissioner Wilson, the motion. Commissioner Cook, the second on the notaries. Any discussion? Commissioner Mills?
Not on that. If I might go back, I didn't know whether I needed to declare conflict of interest on mine and not vote. Anyway, I didn't vote for me.
Okay.
I would like to vote for me, but if it's wrong, I'm not doing it.
Maybe we need to rethink that. Show the record that Commissioner Mills is declaring conflict and voting her conscience, of course, but is abstaining from voting on that situation, and show that in the record, if you would, Ms. Anderson. All in favor of the notaries, say aye. Opposed? Show it unanimous adoption of the notaries as presented. Consent agenda? You have a consent agenda that's been provided to you with four resolutions. I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda. Motion by Commissioner Cook, second by Commissioner Smith, to accept and approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? I see none. Consent agenda is loaded on the board. If you're in favor of the consent agenda, press the yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted, wish to vote? Quarter vote, please. Commissioner Lynch, you pushed the wrong button, it looks like. There we go. Thank you. 20 yes, unanimous adoption of the consent agenda. There's no unfinished business. We'll move to new business zoning. We do have a public hearing. Public hearing regarding Resolution Number 5-0710, Resolution to amend the zoning ordinance text originally adopted April 18, 1988, regarding rural retreat uses. At this point in time, I'll open the public hearing. If you wish to address the commission, if you would, please come forward to the podium. Give us your name and address, and I'll allow you to address the commission. I'll give you three minutes to do that, and certainly welcome you to come do that. So if you would, please come forward.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is David Gibson. My wife and I are the founders of Deer Run Retreat Center, which is a nonprofit, non-denominational Christian camp and retreat center. And just want to say that I'm excited about this ordinance, and it's something that I think we need to really govern this type of use. Our purpose is to provide a place that will preserve some of the beauty of our county and also provide a great place for children and families to come and just spend some time away from some of the things in the world and grow together. I have met with my commissioners previously, and there was some concern about some of the wording in number four, paragraph number four of Section 4400BB, and I've expressed that to my commissioners, and they may address that later. I just simply wanted to bring that up, and I thank you for your time.
Ms. Gibson, what is your address?
My address is 3865 Perkins Road.
Perkins Road, Franklin, Tennessee.
Thompson Station.
Thompson Station.
37179.
37179. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. All good evening.
Anyone else wishing to address the commission through this public hearing? Please step forward. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. My name is David Hawkins. I'm at 5114 Answay Drive, Nashville, Tennessee, 37205. I'm a registered architect in the state of Tennessee, and I am representing Mr. Clayton McWhorter, who could not be here tonight. He has a farm on Lewisburg Pike, and he wishes to voice his support through me of the adoption of this rural retreat text amendment. He has 400-plus acres on Lewisburg Pike and lives there, and would like to be able to construct a family lodge on his property, and believes that this text amendment adoption would allow him to do so. But he and his family do offer their support to this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Others wishing to address the commission on some part of this public hearing? Last call. Public hearing is closed. We'll now entertain adoption or entertain Resolution Number 50710, Resolution to amend the zoning ordinance text originally adopted April 18, 1988, regarding rural retreat uses. Commissioner Walton, please.
For approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Brockman. The committee reports. Planning Commission, Commissioner Walton?
740 against.
Discussion, if you would, explain this, if you'd like to, Commissioner Walton.
Well, basically, in a nutshell, it just kind of redefines and removes the definitions for country and campgrounds in Dude Ranch, and I could defer to Mike Matheson.
Let me see, are there any questions of any commissioner on this? You've had an opportunity to read it, you've heard Commissioner Walton's explanation that's here. Any comments or questions you want to explain to Commissioner Hancock? I know that this is an issue that's been very close to you, and Commissioner Hester. So let's see, Commissioner Hester, you're the person to speak, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On section, I believe it's page six or seven of this document, that has been so very well put together, and I would like to say that I appreciate all the work of the folks on zoning, and I know that there has, I know Commissioner Hayes has worked on this and various other individuals. It is section, at the top of the page, it says, "Add Section 4400 dot BB as follows." And in paragraph four, I would just like to express my concern about some of the terminology, especially that second sentence there, additional guest rooms or campsites shall be permitted. I am in favor of this amendment, but I am just wishing to possibly have some clarification at a future time on the definition of campsite and guest room. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Hancock?
Mr. Chairman and Planning Commission, I too, this is a good amendment to our ordinance, and it'll serve us well. There's a great need for it. On that paragraph four, Commissioner Hester and I don't even attempt to hold this up because it is a good, it is a good document, and it needs to be put in place. But we would like to have a commitment from the Planning Department that they will meet with us and some of the folks that want to maybe tweak this thing a little bit and see if we can come back with another amendment at a later date on this four, that will put it in line with those 4%, 5% of the facilities that are out there that it's not in line with. And if, and I guess I ask, Mike, is that possible?
Mike, would you address this issue on item number four that Commissioner Hester and Hancock are referring to?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and Chairman Hancock, we would be happy to meet with you all and Mr. Gibson to discuss the language in that particular item, and then create a recommendation for our Planning Commission, and then ultimately back to you.
Mr. Chairman, I wholeheartedly endorse this amendment and encourage all my fellow commissioners to pass it.
Very well. Other comments? Commissioner Hayes, please.
I too totally support this resolution, and I think it's appropriate to continue to look and see if there's any tweaking that needs to be done. But we have an opportunity here to make another good use of agricultural land and to make it really preserve green space. The three people that I know who are involved now are doing a wonderful service in their community. They have beautiful facilities and beautiful farms, and by us allowing this to happen, they can continue to enjoy, continue to keep the green, and make things beautiful for everyone who... who visits. I know as the Taproot Farms is a wonderful experience. I know Clayton McWhorter will make a wonderful retreat and I certainly, in seeing Deer Run, there's nothing that I have seen that will quite equal that for retreat. So I certainly hope that you will support it and I too would ask the planning commission just to continue to look and tweak it in a few places.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, I just wanted to say that we have a representative here from Taproot Farm, too, Susan Ingram, and I know that she has worked very, very hard to try to get her accommodations and various meeting areas arranged and do it in the proper way that needs to be done through this. And I know that I commend the planning commission and all the representatives that have done such a good job to put this together and I certainly recommend we pass this.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Walton, back to you. Is sponsor any follow-up closeout?
No, sir.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation and the discussion and we're talking about section forty-four zero zero dot B B under section and item number four, the request of the commission to the planning area. Mr. Madison, is that you continue to review that, bring reviews and the scrutiny of that back to the commission for review? And that's appropriate to ask you to do that and we'll proceed. If there's no further discussion, anybody else wanting to discuss resolution that's not had an opportunity to? I see none. Resolution five oh seven ten is up for consideration, amending the zoning ordinance regarding rural retreat uses. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Has everybody voted that wishes to vote? Record a vote, please.
Twenty yes.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Twenty yes, zero no. Resolution unanimously adopted. Appropriations? Moving on to resolution number five dash oh seven dash one. Mayor Anderson has just arrived. Anybody have any questions, the mayor, before we proceed through these resolutions? I see none. Moving on to the resolution five oh seven one. Resolution appropriating one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to the general purpose school fund two thousand and six seven operating budget for special education needs. Commissioner Mills?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Langston. School board report, twelve yes, zero no. Education committee?
Five yes, zero none.
Thank you. Budget committee?
Five far zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Mills, please.
I'm sure all of you read it, but there are some things I need to point out. If you look at the first paragraph, you see where the school board has had to go through due process litigation in special ed and they actually need fifty thousand dollars more. Look at the next one and you see where you need more money for contracted services for children of special needs. Next paragraph, they did not anticipate the additional expense, but they have. And then the last paragraph is that they will be getting approximately seventy-five thousand dollars addition of federal funds. And if we need anything else, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that you let Dr. Sharpe explain this.
Thank you. This has been through all the committees and been discussed, but we'll entertain if there are other questions, press your button and we'll recognize you. If not, any other questions of Commissioner Mills on five oh seven one? I see none. Five oh seven one is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted that wished to vote? Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty yes.
Thank you. Resolution is adopted unanimously. Resolution number five oh seven two. Resolution transferring from one major category to another in the general purpose school fund two thousand six seven operating budget. Commissioner Mills?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Chalfont. Delayed reaction. Let's see, school board is twelve yes, zero no. Education committee?
Five far zero no.
Thank you. Budget committee?
All it's got on its pass and I'm not exactly sure what that is.
It's five to zero looking on this sheet that's attached here. So explanation, Commissioner Mills, please.
All right, again, this is just transferring funds from one category to the other. And if you look at the first paragraph, it talks about the school board budget the same number position for career and technology teachers from the prior year. And then if you go down to the third one, there were more career and technology teachers needed than budgeted for and this fund had to be taken from the regular teachers' allocation. And again, if we need any more explanation, Dr. Sharpe is here.
Any questions on resolution five oh seven two? I see none. Five oh seven two is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Has everybody voted that wished to vote? Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty yes.
Twenty yes. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution five oh seven three. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand and six seven parks and recreation budget by fifty-five hundred dollars. Revenues to come from donations. Commissioner Cook, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Langston. Parks and Recreation Committee?
Six four zero against.
Thank you. Budget committee?
Five far zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Cook?
These are donations that were given to help fund the theater project for children.
Any questions of Commissioner Cook on this resolution? I see none. Five oh seven three is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Has everybody voted that wished to vote? Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution five oh seven four. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand and six seven capital projects budget by two hundred ninety thousand dollars. Revenues to come from unappropriated county federal grant funds. Commissioner Cook?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Hayes, the second. Parks and Recreation Committee?
Six four zero against.
Budget committee?
Five far zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Cook?
These are federal grant funds that we received to help to pave an access road off a seventy-two acre passive park that we were able to get on the Natchez Trace Parkway. And I'd like to allow Commissioner Hayes to speak to this issue since she was very instrumental in it.
Thank you. Commissioner Hayes?
Thank you. Back some years ago, we were able to get the state to give us the seventy-two acres for a passive park. The problem was there was no accessibility to that land except going through the Natchez, by the Natchez Trace Park. We were able to solicit through our representatives and through the Natchez Trace Parkway Association and the Natchez Trace staff. They put in their budget requesting through the Federal Highway Commission up to three hundred thousand dollars, which was approved for a grant to come back and for them to do this road. By the time that we got there, the bids were to excess of five hundred thousand, but by allowing our highway department to do it, and we're very appreciative to Eddie and his highway department, then they can come in for the three hundred thousand dollars. So, or for their bid was two hundred and ninety thousand. So this is money that the federal government has sent, Federal Highway has sent to us for our accessible road to go through our park and at no expense to our Williamson County taxpayers at this point.
Questions of Commissioner Hayes or Cook on this resolution? I see none. Five oh seven four is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution five oh seven five. Resolution transferring sixty-one thousand dollars between major categories within the two thousand six seven budget. Commissioner Hayes?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Cook. Budget committee report, please.
Five far zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
This is actually a housekeeping measure. Some years ago, we didn't do what we're going to be doing a little bit later as far as approving our hotel motel tax for one year. There was some money that was sort of stockpiled. At first, the Attorney General wanted it returned to the people who had paid it, but it was impossible, as our wonderful attorneys pointed out to them, to go back to give it to every visitor who'd ever come to Williamson County. So the Attorney General ruled that we could save that money and use it for visitor services or for, at that time, the bicentennial or for things related to improving visitor services. It started out being about eighty-one thousand, I believe, and we did use some for the bicentennial. We used ten thousand with your approval through the Franklin Charge for the battlefield as a partner there and sixty-one thousand was left. Well, every year, it has a false implication with the tourism budget because it appears in the budget, but the tourism committee is not able to spend it. It's a capital that's just there. With the new look at a new task force organization, which we have hoped to form in the future, it just needs to do a housecleaning fact of just keeping this in a capital fund at which time we approve the use and the spending and not be going with our normal tourism budget.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions of Commissioner Hayes on five oh seven five? I see none. Five oh seven five is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Has everybody voted that wishes to vote? Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution five oh seven seven. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand and six seven county clerk's budget by ten thousand dollars for additional postage. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Commissioner Hayes?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Wilson. Budget committee report?
Five far zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
Well, as you can imagine, it's just a matter of Ms. Anderson needing more postage. It's paid back to her, but we have to account for it, money in, money out. So it's just a housekeeping measure to take care of more postage for her department.
And as of today, it's three cents more expensive, right?
Sure did, sir. That really hurts us, too.
Any other questions of Commissioner Hayes on five oh seven seven? I see none. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Has everybody voted that wishes to vote? Record a vote, please.
Twenty yes.
Twenty yes, zero no. Unanimous adoption. Five oh seven eight. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand and six seven general sessions budget by three thousand dollars. Revenues to come from probation fees. Commissioner Chalfont?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Lynch. Law enforcement, public safety committee?
Five zero, five four zero against.
Thank you, sir. Budget committee?
Five far zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Chalfont?
I think it's pretty well self-explanatory. The revenues are coming in from probation fees.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Chalfont? I see none. Five oh seven eight is up for your consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted that wishes to vote? Record a vote, please.
Twenty yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution five oh seven nine. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand and six seven health department budget by forty-seven hundred, forty-seven thousand one hundred dollars. Revenues to come from grant through state of Tennessee. Commissioner Walton?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Brockman, the second. Public health committee?
Four four zero against.
Thank you, sir. Budget committee?
Five far zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Walton?
It's just grant money from state of Tennessee.
Ms. Mills, I know you serve on that committee. Have any follow-up on that?
No, I don't. This just comes from a grant from the state of Tennessee and that we don't have anything. We don't need to add anything.
Okay.
The county does not in the operation because of our rural health services.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Coben, you have follow-up on this resolution, please, sir?
Mr. Chairman, everything that's been said is correct. Just to give you a little more background, when we set our budget in July, the state has not finished their contract for this. It's what they call the DGA grant, it's some nine hundred thousand dollars. And so we budget what we know at that time and this is just getting down to the actual contract that was signed.
Thank you, sir. Other questions? I see none. Five oh seven nine is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted that wishes to vote? Record a vote, please.
Twenty yes.
Thank you. Resolution is unanimously adopted. Five oh seven thirteen. Resolution increasing various line items of the two thousand and six seven extended school program fund budget by one hundred thirty-eight thousand eight hundred twenty dollars using anticipated fees. Commissioner Mills?
Move for approval.
Second. Commissioner Wilson. School board, eleven yes. Education committee?
Four far, zero against.
Thank you. Budget committee?
Five far zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Mills?
This program has, the student participation has greatly increased during this school year and they're going to take in Chadman's Retreat and the summer school program at Pinewood and College Grove. And when they prepared the budget last year, they took more money out of the child's care instead of, they didn't have what they needed. And this was due to the transfer and the operation of YMCA. And the other one, the summer program was started, made at Page Middle School. And the fund is sufficient and these increases will be funded by anticipated student fees so it won't cost the county anything.
Thank you, ma'am.
But again, if you need more explanation, Dr. Sharpe is here.
Any questions of Commissioner Mills on five oh seven thirteen? I see none. If you're in favor of five oh seven thirteen, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted that wishes to vote? Record a vote, please.
Twenty yes.
Thank you. Resolution is unanimously adopted. Resolution five oh seven fourteen. A resolution appropriating Microsoft class action settlement funds for Microsoft licenses. Commissioner Mills, please.
Move for approval.
Second. Commissioner Brockman. School board is eleven yes. Education committee?
Four zero.
Thank you. Budget committee?
Five far zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Mills?
The school board was notified that a class action lawsuit had been filed and they would receive four hundred seventeen thousand two hundred ninety-three dollars, but it has to be used for technology expenditure tools. And they had until April thirty to spend the money and claim the award.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anything else, Dr. Sharpe?
Any questions of Commissioner Mills on three oh, five oh seven fourteen? I see none. If you're in favor of five oh seven fourteen, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted that wishes to vote? Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Jason over there.
Everybody voted. Commissioner Para?
Twenty yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution five oh seven fifteen. Resolution transferring between major categories within the general purpose school fund two thousand and six seven operating budget and using fund balance for seventy-eight thousand dollars of technology needs. Commissioner Mills?
Move for approval.
Commissioner, who's second over here?
Russell.
Commissioner Hester, the second. School board, eleven yes. Education committee?
Four far zero against.
Thank you. Budget committee?
Four far one against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Mills?
All right, technology has requested the same amount for several years for materials and supplies, which includes, you know, the toner and batteries. And they have increased this over four hundred printers and they have replaced about one thousand printers, which includes their own thousand printers, which includes the open of new schools. And at the end of February, they had only one thousand, nine-hundred dollars left in that account. And there will be needs, continuous need of items through the end of the school year. And again, if you need any more explanation, Dr. Sharpe is here.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Para, please.
Just had a couple of questions of Dr. Sharpe on this one, if I might.
Dr. Sharpe, would you come forward, please?
Um, just had a question. Did you, have you guys, I was surprised by the number of printers. Have you guys looked at all that consolidating printers and consolidating them, possibly the ones that are lower cost, that are more laser jet versus inkjet? I know ink cartridges are especially expensive. I know my, where I work personally, we've consolidated down to many less printers, which nobody particularly likes, but it does work. So, just had that question.
I, I think we have done that, but there's still, with thirty-six schools, I mean, you can only consolidate down so much with that many buildings. But I think we have done that, and we have gone away from the inkjet printers. I think with the new printers that we ordered, the toner cartridges in them were short-lived because it was a brand-new printer, and once you replace them, that new toner cartridge is very long-lived, but we had to replace a lot of them at one time.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions, Commissioner? Other questions on Resolution 507-15? See none? Thank you, Becky.
You're welcome.
If you're in favor of 507-15, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Everybody voted that wishes to vote? Record the vote, please.
Nineteen yes, one no.
Nineteen yes, one no. Resolution is adopted. Resolution number 507-16. Resolution amending the five-year capital improvements budget and appropriating thirteen thousand dollars Recreation Privilege Tax Funds into the 2006-7 Parks and Recreation Budget. Commissioner Cook.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Langston II. Parks and Rec Committee report.
Six four zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee.
Five far zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Cook.
In the summertime, Parks and Rec has a lot of part-time help, and it can come to as many as three hundred employees, and they would like this money to install a time clock with the automatic identification scan card for the employees to clock in and out at the different locations, excuse me, where the part-time help works. And then, this would be linked directly to the computers in the administrative office, and it would make doing their pay stubs and giving them the right pay and a lot less work for everybody involved.
Thank you, ma'am.
If you have any questions, Director Doug Hood is here.
Any questions of Commissioner Cook on Resolution 507-16? I see none? If you're in favor of 507-16, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Everybody voted that wishes to vote? Record the vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty yes.
Twenty yes, zero no. Resolution unanimously adopted. 507-17. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2006-7 Solid Waste Sanitation Budget by thirteen thousand dollars for trustees' commission revenues. Commission revenues to come from unappropriated fund balance. Commissioner Hayes.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second Commissioner Cook. Budget Committee.
Five far zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Hayes.
This is another housekeeping. The trustee collects fees for the collection of all revenue, and we need some more line item budget money to, to take care of the fees.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions of Commissioner Hayes on 507-17? I see none. Resolution 507-17 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Everybody voted that wishes to vote? Record the vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Twenty yes, zero no. Resolution 507-18. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2006-7 Debt Service for Interest Payments. Commissioner Lynch.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second Commissioner Williams. Budget Committee report.
Five far zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please, sir.
What this is, is interest wasn't put in the budget last year, and we got to pay our bills on the bonds and kept it lowly, no.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of Commissioner Lynch on 507-18? I see none? If you're in favor of 507-18, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Everybody voted that wished to vote? Record the vote, please.
Twenty yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. 507-19. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2006-7 Library Budget by forty-one thousand, three-hundred thirty-seven dollars and fourteen cents. Revenues to come from donations. Commissioner Barnwell.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second Commissioner Mills. Budget Committee report.
Five far zero against.
Thank you. Library Board Trustees, Library Board of Directors report.
Six four zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell.
Yes, this is just a housekeeping exercise to account for the funds we receive through donations from the cities, Franklin and Memorial's, and from the friends of the library, and appropriating it to its intended destination.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of Commissioner Barnwell on Resolution 19? I see none? If you're in favor of 507-19, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button?
I can't see nothing out of these damn five votes.
Everybody voted that wished to vote? Record the vote, please.
Twenty yes.
Thank you. Twenty yes, zero no. Resolution unanimously adopted. 507-23. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2006-7 Juvenile Services Budget by thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds received from participants' fees. Commissioner Smith.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second Commissioner Barnwell. Did I, my hearing, my, who was?
Maybe Langston and Shalfont.
Langston and Shalfont, okay. Ty? Okay, all right. Law Enforcement Public Safety Committee.
Law Enforcement Public Safety, five in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee.
Five far zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Smith.
These are, um, again, accounting changes here with regard to participant fees and juvenile services having to do with drug screening. So, uh, those are fees coming in and required expenditures.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Smith? I see none. 507-23 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Everybody voted that wished to vote? Record the vote, please.
Twenty yes.
Thank you. Twenty yes, zero no. 507-25. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2006-7 Capital Projects Budget by one-hundred thousand dollars. Revenues to come from donation for use at the Agricultural Exposition Park. Commissioner Lynch.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Hayes, the second. Budget Committee.
Five far zero against.
Thank you, sir. Explanation, Commissioner Lynch.
What this is, one of the finest ladies that ever lived in this county passed away. She donated a hundred thousand dollars in a wheel to the Ag Park, and this money is to be spent out there.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Lynch on this resolution? I see none. 507-25 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Everybody voted that wishes to vote? Record the vote, please.
Twenty yes.
Thank you. Resolution is unanimously adopted, and just to report as a part of the record, Mr. Wallace has reported to us at a later date, we'll have the appropriate ceremony and dedication honoring Ms. Mary Lizzie as a part of that. So, we will have that later, later on down the road. Resolution 507-26. Resolution transferring fifty-seven thousand dollars between major categories within the 2006-7 Highway Department Budget. Commissioner Lynch.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second Commissioner Cook. Highway Commission approved this unanimously, five four, zero against. Budget Committee.
Budget Committee, five far zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Lynch.
What this is, is to pay for the high cost of gasoline and scum and that you hadn't got that much money in the budget.
Questions of Commissioner Lynch on this resolution? I see none? In favor of 507-26? Press the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Everybody voted that wishes to vote? Record the vote, please.
Twenty yes.
Thank you. Resolution is unanimously adopted. Twenty yes, zero no.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to clarify something. He, he said it was transferring to gasoline, but it was from gasoline. Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Transferring from gasoline to...
They needed the money for engineering and legal services.
Correct. That's correct.
That's all.
Okay? So, the record should reflect transferring from gasoline to engineering. Thank you, Commissioner. We voted, and, and, okay, all right. Okay, 507-27. Amending Resolution appropriating and amending the 2006-7 Register of Deeds Budget by fifty-three thousand, nine hundred dollars. Revenues to come from document recording fees. Commissioner Lynch.
Mr. Chairman, I can't read anything with these bifocals, and I apologize to the Commissioner, but I'll move for approval on this.
Is there a second? Commissioner Hayes, the second. Budget Committee.
Five far zero against.
Thank you. Explanation.
What this is, is a two-dollar fee the register receives from law passed by state to upgrade the equipment in the office.
Questions of Commissioner Lynch? It doesn't require him to read. See none? 507-27 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Record the vote, please.
Twenty yes.
Thank you. Resolution adopted unanimously.
You don't need to read much, you've got most of it memorized.
Resolution 507-6. Resolution requesting authorization for the installation of a new signal head at the intersection of Hillsborough Road and Sneed Road. Commissioner Walton.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second Commissioner Williams. Highway Commission adopted this, five four, zero against. Budget Committee.
Five far zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Walton.
Yes, sir. There's two hundred acres on Hillsborough Road that has some history around there as far as, uh, some issues trying to get it developed, and we have the opportunity, an individual has come through, forward to buy the two hundred acres to put his home on, on this property. So, it would take two hundred acres out of a development pool. Uh, they're requesting at the, at the intersection of Sneed Road and Hillsborough Road, there is a traffic light there, and they want to have their, the entrance to this home there, and they're working with Bob Murphy with RPM and Associates to do the design work or the engineering, traffic engineering on this, and they will put a trip mechanism there, so when, when it's needed, it would trip the traffic light. They've been through T-Dot, and it's been approved at T-Dot, and we've got a letter to that effect. Something I'm excited about because it does pull two hundred acres out of a development pool. Uh, and, uh, just urge your participation.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Brockman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to ask our legal representative, does this set any sort of precedent when, when the next person wants that sort of head attached to a current light?
I wouldn't think so. No.
Okay.
Thank you. Other questions? Commissioner Greer.
I noticed that the date on it says the eighth day of May, needs to be changed to the fourteenth.
Thank you. Other comments and questions? Commissioner Bane, please.
Mr. Chairman, I have a, very familiar with the situation, very similar to this in Brentwood at the, where Granny White dead ends into Murray Lane. There's been a small development, and they put a trip head making the fourth direction, and it works very well.
Thank you, sir. Other questions? Commissioner Walton on 507-6? I see none? In favor of 507-6? Press the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Everybody voted that wished to vote? Record the vote, please.
Twenty yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. 507-21. Resolution setting the Williamson County Hotel Motel Tax Rate for the fiscal year 2007-8. Commissioners Hayes and Walton.
Move for approval.
Second.
Tax Study Committee. Report.
Uh, four four zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee.
Five far zero against.
Explanation.
I'll defer to Ms. Hayes.
Ms. Hayes.
We have to do this every year. It's the same, we, we're not changing the tax rate. It's the same, it's ongoing for many years now, and we just have to reapprove it every year. We will get the same fix that we were several years back.
Thank you, ma'am. Follow-up, Commissioner Walton? Any questions of Commissioners Hayes and Walton on 507-21? I see none? 507-21 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Everybody voted that wished to vote? Record the vote, please. Commissioner Cook.
Thank you. Twenty yes.
Resolution is unanimously adopted. Twenty yes. Resolution to modify the Williamson County Broad Base Tax Relief Program for the elderly citizens of Williamson County, Tennessee. Commissioner Walton.
Move for approval.
Second Commissioner Wilson. Tax Study Committee.
Four four zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee.
Five far zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Walton.
Yes, sir. This, this changes the tax relief for elderly citizens, uh, many of them in the lower income bracket, uh, but they become ineligible due to the increase in Social Security, and this would adjust that for those.
Thank you. Thank you. If you would notice, the last now therefore be it resolved paragraph, second from the bottom, changed to May 7th to May 14th. Other discussion questions? Commissioner Para?
I am in favor of raising it, but the question I have is why we should tie it to the social security cost of living increase instead of just deciding each year on our own how much we want to increase it. That may be the right number every year, it may not be. It may be we need more or less and I just would ask why we should tie it to that instead of just deciding each year how much we want to raise it on our own. I just hate to tie future commissions when we don't know what number they're going to adjust it to. That's a question for anybody in general.
Commissioner Walton?
I don't have an answer to that. I don't know if Joey's here or not.
Joey Davis, are you in the room?
I don't see him.
Mr. Coleman, do you, would you please come forward and address? Question Mr. Para has asked is why tie that to the social security index?
Yes, sir. I'll try to give some explanation if I can, but what this would do would give the trustee the authority to automatically do that, but the commission could override that at any time if they wanted to change the amount, increase it, they could, but without action it would give the trustee the authority to do that.
Thank you sir. Other questions on this resolution? I see none. 50722 is up for consideration with that change on that date. All in, if you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed your no button. Everybody voted, wished to vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 50724, a resolution to authorize collection of a victim's assistance assessment pursuant to Tennessee Code annotated 40-24-109. Commissioner Smith?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Chalfont? Law Enforcement Public Safety Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Thank you sir. Budget Committee?
Five, far, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Smith?
The District Attorney's Office has for some time operated a victim's assistance program. It has at times been fairly tenuous with funding. The state passed this law recently allowing a fee to be charged to certain cases in the courts to help fund that and that would, this would authorize collecting that fee and passing it through to the victim's assistance program.
Thank you sir. Any questions of Commissioner Smith? This has gone through all the committees unanimously. Any discussion or questions? I see none. 50724 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed your no button. Everybody voted that wished to vote? Record the vote, please.
Twenty yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 50729, resolution authorizing the county attorney's office to initiate preliminary steps for condemnation of property located at 4265 Long Lane, Franklin, Tennessee. Commissioner Bain and Lynch?
Move. Second.
Commissioner Chalfont, the second. Budget Committee? Commissioner Lynch?
Three, far, two against.
Property Committee?
Five, far, one against.
Thank you sir. Explanation, Commissioner Bain, please.
Yes, sir. This is a piece of property that has been familiar to the commission, I think, for a number of years since we bought, or the commission bought the Ag Expo Center property. This is the five acres that is, that is in the curve of Long Lane where the two trailers sit. It's a piece of property that has always been central to the expansion plans at the Expo Center, primarily because of the topography there. It's relatively flat and it is an area that we have talked about expanding into. The current owner bought this property. The county had also been negotiating with the original owner for a number of years and I think a number of people on the commission participated in those negotiations and for a number of reasons, they did not go forward. And we're to the process now where an out-of-state, well, it's not true, the man's business is out-of-state and he has bought this piece of property. It's currently zoned agricultural and I think it has not been, the city of Franklin has not been approached to change the zoning on it. And I think while this is not something I enjoy doing, it's something that probably needs to be done and I have moved this forward.
Thank you sir. Questions? Commissioner Williams?
Yes, sir. With all due respect to Commissioner Bain, he and I sit on the Budget Committee together and we differ on this. I don't think that this is the purpose of eminent domain to take private property because it's conducive to the time. I think we tread on, when government does take private property, there needs to be a real need to government to do that and I don't think that rises to this level this time and I have to vote no against this resolution.
Thank you sir. If I could, because it's, I think, important to commission, no, I'd like to ask counsel just to give us a very quick comment on the process that we're going to go through because the law has changed and it's a two-step process. Counsel?
This resolution actually only authorizes the acquisition of appraisals of the property and does not authorize the condemnation of the property. The second step after acquisition of the appraisals would be to bring it back to this commission on the question of whether to actually authorize the condemnation with the knowledge of what those appraisal showed in terms of the fair market value and the likely amount of monies that would have to be deposited in the court. So in one instance, it does begin the process, but it does not authorize the filing of any condemnation or eminent domain. At this point, that would be a second vote of this body if it were to come to that.
Thank you sir. Commissioner Chalfont?
Counsel covered everything. This is simply an okay to have the property appraised.
Thank you sir. Commissioner Brockman?
Mr. Chairman, I see the Ag Park as such a valuable resource for this county and I think it's important for us to look to this piece of property to add to the quality and it's thought of as crucial and I would hate to see something happen there that would be detrimental to the Ag Park. So I just feel like we have to go forward with this, even though I understand Commissioner Williams' reluctance to use condemnation.
Thank you ma'am. Commissioner Lynch?
The Ag son of Despenes, this piece of property, if it's ever going to move forward, and I like Mr. Bain, I don't enjoy doing this, but this is the only way we're going to get it and we need to do it.
Thank you sir. Any other comments on the resolution that's before us consideration at this time, Resolution 50729? Anyone else wishing to speak? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 50729, press your yes button, opposed your no button. Everybody voted that wished to vote? Record the vote, please.
Eighteen yes, two no.
Eighteen yes, two no. Resolution is adopted, eighteen to two. Is there anything else that needs to be announced or come before the commission? Again, remember, resolution deadlines for the June County Commission meeting will be Friday, May 25th at 4:30 PM. Because of the Memorial Day holiday, so.
We just had several commissioners ask me, um, Resolution 28, that was in your package, is under that? Several votes thought that we overlooked it.
Okay, just as an announcement, the commission and its rules passed and allowed the county mayor to enter on the consent agenda, contract renewals and that sort of thing. Resolution number 50728 was on your consent agenda and that's a rule that we adopted to allow that to happen. Several of you've asked the question, did we skip that? We approved that on the consent agenda earlier in the evening, so. If there's nothing further, entertain a motion. We adjourn. All in favor, say aye. We're adjourned. Thank you very much and have a good evening.